Use SMID financing because that's not available. But those are better, more convenient boundaries. It also offers an alternative arrangement for parking in Old Town if the Old Town Association and businesses and residents approve the concept. So we'll go into more detail during the council meeting. Page three, number one, new business would approve an IRB letter of intent for the construction of 12 Studio and 24 One Bedroom Apartments in the downtown. No property tax abatement is being requested for this project. Simply sales tax on construction materials. Number two would approve ordinances pertaining to illegal camping and pedestrian conduct. These have been workshopped previously. Number three would amend traffic citation ordinances to reflect recent changes by the Kansas Legislature. Four would receive, file and ratify the placement of various insurance coverages for 2025. Number five would approve the submission of a grant application for the purchase of replacement radios in the fire department. Number six would approve a vendor for the supply of park and recreation uniforms. Number seven would approve budget adjustment to fund a strategic planning process for the possible creation of a family justice center. And this is an adjustment inside the municipal court budget. That's all I have on page four. On page five, non-consent, number one, would approve a capital fund funding agreement, additional housing trust fund funding and a staffing change to complete the rehabilitation of Greenway Manor. Page six, item 4B would approve a contract for a construction manager at risk project to make repairs at the Cheney Dam. Seven, 4D would extend the agreement for the provision of automatic vehicle location and GPS services. That's all I have on page seven. On page eight, number seven would approve amendments to 22 affordable housing fund funding agreements to address technical errors that were in the original agreements. Number eight would approve the sale of surplus parcel at 800 East Pawnee. I have on eight. Page nine, number 11 would approve a fire department budget adjustment to reflect higher than anticipated personal services expenses that were incurred in 2024.
The personnel?
Their personnel, yes. And some of those are related to deployments where we went and assisted other agencies with wild fire, I guess wildfire incidents. So I have on nine. Nothing on 10, nothing on 11, nothing on 12, nothing on 13. 14, number 15 is, would approve the annual public housing authority project-based budget. And number 17 would extend the airport special facilities revenue bond deadline to match the construction schedule for the new airport hotel. That's all I have.
How long does the extension for?
I think it's till, it's in the report, I think it's till mid-year 2025, if I remember correctly. Well, with that, we've got our monthly update. And I believe that it's from the library today. So Jamie? Maybe it's quicker than she thought it would be. Yeah, let's just double check. Maybe we got our wires crossed, but. Probably thought it'd be as long as a normal council meeting. She'll be here five hours.
Oh, then that was funny.
Yes. Well, we have the tree lighting tonight and the event at NAFSC.
I have an fantastic joke.
Well, okay.
How much does Santa pay for parking?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Nothing, it's on the house.
Are there propane heaters at the mayor's tree lighting this year? Hey, that fire in the street was good, that one. Was that two, three years ago, maybe? A little fire pit? Do apologize, I did forget one thing on the parking. There is a correction on the capital improvement sheet that's attached. So I think we're going to reprint that report and the attachments for you. So you've got everything together. It's in the box, not on your door, by Jamie. We accidentally included some enhancements to the garages with the deferred maintenance projects. And that wasn't correct. So we did match our revenue and expenses. Just give us two minutes.
I'm Jamie Nix from the Wichita Public Library. I'm going to briefly talk with you about our quality of life family engagement services. I think, as you know, the library does a lot for all of our community. This is zooming in specifically on some strategy that we've been underway with in the last three years to shift our focus from really working with the littles and child development to broadening our perspective and shaping our services around what does family engagement and support of a whole family look like? Our mission is to discover, connect, discover, learn and thrive. Did want to point out, one of the things, and this is not our final graphic, but we're in the phase of creating a new customer experience model for Wichita Public Library. And we think about this as we engage with parents and caregivers and children. That seamless service, that's welcoming, that acknowledged will provides choices and increases access for all of our visitors. But not all of us are visiting the library. I wanted to show you just some statistics about cardholders in our residence where their earnings are less than $50,000 per year, where they're at in their membership with the library. We're in incredibly good shape. I think about 64% of our residents have library cards, but we can see there's some room to grow. And as we've been looking at how to focus our marketing, our outreach and really targeting the population that's going to have the greatest impact of reconnecting with their library. Our library board and staff are looking at our community members who may not be earning as much and who have children potentially in the home. We did issue over 47,000 e-cards this year through student registration with USD 259. Also Derby has gotten involved in our student e-card program, which is helping access 24/7 and supporting schools. This is the laundry list of all of the things your public library does to support families from little to through teen. They're in no particular order except the top two collections and service point coverage. That's where most of our investments go. Collections and staffing to staff your buildings. But we have little free libraries, summer reading tours, lots of strategic partnerships, our student e-card program, which I just mentioned. And importantly, training our staff is an important piece of delivering quality service. In 2023, we circulated over a half a million children's items, which is amazing. Counted for almost 50% of our entire circulation. Yet, as we're looking at how we're spending our money on collections, I think that's an opportunity for us to make some adjustments, shift our model a little bit and get creative about how we might be able to earn more dollars in this space. E-collections are significantly more expensive than physical copies. But at this point, 12% of the city collection budget is on children's material. Something we just launched, I know we've talked about this, but ASQ is now available for families and caregivers from the Advanced Learning Library. It's a parent-driven caregiver-driven assessment of the milestones of your kids from two months to five years. It's a requirement for kindergarten enrollment. And it's something that is really mysterious to a lot of people. But this can create opportunities for creating connections to interventions, sharing ideas and stories and really partners who can help parents and new, ensure their kid is developing as successfully as possible. Certified our Advanced Learning Library as a family place library. We have goals to do that across our system. It comes with an investment. So our foundation is actively looking at ways we can do this. But one thing we are doing with each of our branch remodels is making sure we're set up to have a family place space in addition to the collections. With this comes a six-week parent educator workshop. That's a really informal, low-risk way of learning about kids and their development and what resources are available. This is a number of the specialists who have come in this last year and connected with residents. A lot of targeted outreach right now, especially through our book bus. I think more importantly, I mean, as kind of to continue that strategy of trying to reach people where they're at for individuals who aren't necessarily connected with the library. Our family literacy coordinator, Reece Dean, took her book bus over to State Star Program. And it's just been incredible hearing and seeing the connections, the delight that's happening and the support we're getting from microschools even. We're trying to support alternative education settings in different ways. There are more ways that kids can get educated today than ever. And making sure that resources and we're knowing what they're needing so that we can be responsive from diverse books to online learning as well. Reece makes regular stops at our Learning Lab, the Wildflower School and Urban Prep. It's just been an incredible, incredible way to get books into hands. We do have some specific teen engagement that's going on. We're an organization that can like take a step a year with something. And so we built the process to issue e-cards. And now we're in the phase of increasing student awareness and use. We're seeing that families across Wichita are using the students' cards, which is great. But we're working to improve connectivity and communications. We have an active youth-led teen advisory board that's coming up with some great programs and ways to support and advocate for the library and be engaged citizens. We're doing some regional outreach with libraries in the Central County area to connect with the juvenile corrections programs. Number of years, we haven't had too much ability to get in touch with them. And we're working with them really at this point to increase our teen book sets, book discussion kits that we would be able to bring to the detention centers so they can easily facilitate a book discussion. We're looking at different formats and there's some programming conversations that are underway. As we were talking with Legacy Works about a really important partnership to activate the Advanced Learning Library cafe space. Starting in January, every Saturday for three months, they'll be offering a legacy cafe at the Advanced Learning Library. Where it's youth-led, they're roasting their own coffee beans, grinding it, making the coffee, getting job training, really gaining their confidence and working with diverse community. We're super excited about where this can go. But the alignment between our organizational missions, every time we talk, it just keeps becoming more and more clear that this is something that can gain legs. And so we're hoping to create some draw to the Advanced Learning Library on Saturdays to then be able to continue to fundraise so that this could be always available during the 63 hours a week the library's open. This is also in partnership with Workforce Alliance. We're having a lot of conversations with them about supplemental staffing through EO with youth programs and other ways to support. Sure, we expect in 2025, our branch renovations are going to be complete. And from what we've seen from other remodels and reopenings, it's likely that we'll see a 15% to 20% increase, if not more, in West Link in business. And I think our goal is really trying to figure out how to preemptively adapt our staffing and approaches for this gain-in while we're still trying to connect with people out. So we're shifting a lot of our approaches and the way that we're doing our business in order to gain capacities to do this. And one thing that we know, because we saw our numbers last time, I presented our summer reading numbers last time and they're really dismal. I think I'll tell you 11 children completed the summer reading program at the Angelo Branch. Yeah, yeah. Back in the day before COVID, we had about 30,000 kids signed up for summer reading. And we're nowhere near that. So we're having to think about what's in the way and how do we get whatever's in the way out. And a lot of it is awareness and connection. So we're simplifying our registration. That's one of the barriers that we've experienced. We're talking strategically with the YMCA. How can the summer reading be in 6,000 students' hands immediately? How can we show up at the summer school programs that they're planning and do some special, some more intense programming around reading? We're working with KLC on a civic engagement passport that's really geared towards the audience of family and how families can think about the intersections of all of the different industries that create a civic engaged community. And what are those activities that they could do that are appropriate for the whole family? We're talking with United Way, too, about ways to reimagine the Read to Succeed program to leverage the spaces and places that we have in our communities. So while it's amazingly impactful to come to a school during school hours and kids are there, right? Not all of the volunteers, not that one moment itself isn't the strongest intervention. So part of what we're trying to imagine is how reading tutors can be across all of our libraries all through the year, not just the school year. So stay tuned for how that comes to shape. But it's a really important and strong conversation that we're having right now. I will say, too, we have a thousand books before kindergarten. That program, our youth services, have been spending this year trying to imagine what does a thousand books after kindergarten look like? Through fifth grade reading level. And they've come up with a really neat plan for a Keeper of the Pages kind of challenge. So we hope to hold that out in 2025. Efforts are really focusing in the 67214 and 67216. We'll likely be inviting families and sending out some creative invitations to get in touch. We'll do some more incentive activities. Family engagement is fun. From that photograph, I just think these faces, oh my gosh, they were so delighted. The kid that circled, he had a foot raise with the book bus as she ran, as she was driving off. And they just left so delighted. I think everyone that's engaging with that, we only have one book bus. Remind you that it's a holding down, a tire-train vehicle that we've outfitted with shelving. Kansas Health Foundation provided us a certain grant for a collection with gas and everything. For that magic. But I think more than anything before I leave, just to stress the importance of we're making this work with funds from the city, from the foundation, from our friends and also from grants. We're doing good, quality, strong work. But obviously, it's not reaching the mark. And so our strategies over the next number of years is really to figure out how the library can be integrated into the daily lives of our families who are supporting kids under 18.
What is the partnership with 259 like? When we're talking about summer reading programs, are we able to get in with the students beforehand to let them know about it?
That's honestly the most effective way that we've ever had to promote the summer reading. I mean, we can send information and emails home. But our staff, starting in May, there's about two and a half weeks where they'll exclusively be out and about in schools during presentations, getting kids excited. We moved our like start of summer reading up because during that time in May before school's out, the summer reading starts June 1st, but kids were rushing in to get signed up. So we'll get them signed up early.
Yeah, also want to make a plug for Legacy Works, all the great work they do. I am a recent, recently started drinking coffee. So I will have to actually try their product now instead of just promoting it. How well attended are the forums when we have the family specialist come in that you had talked about earlier? Is that relatively well attended?
We've done three of the education series so far this year. The first one, when we opened registration, there was room for 30 parents and caregivers and kids. And we were filled in the first day and there was maybe about 60 people on the waiting list. So the second one we did, we made sure that people on the waiting list were like the first notified. We sold out, sold out for free. We filled up the same amount of time. And then we've done some experimentation, this third round. Participation in the six-week series, if someone were to try and gain education like they're receiving, it's close to $400 per person if they're receiving free education and completing the series.
Thank you.
So building on what Councilmember Hoheisel said on the summer reading, as you engage schools, are you engaged with PTOs?
Our youth services librarians are, yes.
Okay. I know they always talk, I get all the messages from my daughter's PTO. On the ASQ, because I didn't know that, if a parent comes in with their child to do that at the library, does that count for kindergarten, like they won't have to do it at the school?
I think what they end up doing, their information will be tracked and available for the school system. Yes.
Okay. Is that opportunity shared with pre-K facilities and daycare facilities so they know to tell parents?
Yeah, yeah. We just launched it mid-November. I'm not sure, I haven't heard any, there's a lot of questions about it. And I think, so. Sorry, I shouldn't have done that, but I was going to show you our website. So essentially, we have a lot of the. That the assessment take at home, then come back.
I will help share the news on that because I didn't know what ASQ was until I enrolled my daughter. And I think we would have enjoyed doing that at the library more than where we ended up doing it. That was all the questions I had. I did want to say, I just greatly appreciate where you and your team have taken the library since you started. I've just seen some incredible work going on and so much excitement in the community. So definitely great job. So definitely great job.
Last week, when it took a little while to pull, read along with the date. Aside just checking out a book and bringing shows, because we're seeing a eclectic group coming in for different things. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Yeah. I think the last point I should make is, one of the things that we're thinking about differently than we ever have is when there is a public health crisis, for example, isolation, what's the library's role in helping to build community? Right now, that health crisis is parental stress. Oh my gosh, we know that, right? And so what are the ways that our library helps to fill that gap, to build a healthier community? And these are the tactics that we're using.
I also want to shout out Parker. Parker is everywhere, at every meeting, at every event. I've seen him at different events I didn't think he would be at, just always highlighting the library, but just a really engaged individual. Everybody loves Parker as well, so I'm shouting him out, too.
Vice Mayor, that's all we have.